25, 2023. And I am the chair of the school committee, Elizabeth Spinney, and I call this meeting to order. Before we get started, the first thing we'd like to do is ask if there's any public comment. All right, seeing none, we'll move on with our general business. First, we have the special education report. And if you would, just for our audience, if you come up and introduce yourselves, and then we look forward to hearing what you have to say. Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you for having us. So I'm Nicole McDonald.
And I'm Bob Wall.
We're the special education directors here in Grafton. So we just have a brief update for all of you. Going to start with my favorite topic, the game program update. So we did officially open Kids in There on February 27. This is what the space looks like for those of you that haven't been able to go out and see it just yet. This front with the wood background is the storefront for Bread Guy breads that our students will be working in, and then the additional kitchen space and workspace. It's a little more nice with, you know, flowers and things on the wall right now, but this was when it was first opened. And then we have some of the wonderful people that are a part of this. I would like to give a special thank you to Dr. Cummings, Anita Patel, Tony Lemay, Sean Landevan, who is the teacher coordinator of our game program, Kelly DeRozas, who's our vocational coordinator, Kim Lewin and Pam Allen are our paraprofessionals with the game program, job coaches, Chuck Brown, of course, Bread Guy breads, and then, of course, the young adults that we have pictured here and their parents and guardians. We were able to have kind of an open house for the parents and guardians and the students so the students could show their parents around the space and really kind of get them acquainted to the space. And then, for those of you who did come, I know a couple did, we also opened up our parent advisory council meeting at the game program. So thank you all to everyone that was there for that as well. So I just wanted to include this slide as well because we have gotten questions about, oh, how does my kid become involved in the game program now that it's kind of really been out there in our community? So I just wanted to outline that for folks. Students do need to be between the age of 18 and 22. They're a special education student in which their IEP team determines that their disability needs does require that programming for them to continue. The students typically are obtaining a certificate of attainment or they have deferred their diploma. So a student who does graduate with a diploma could also participate in the game program if their IEP team felt like that was appropriate for them. They would just need to defer their diploma until they were ready to accept their diploma when they were ready to be done with the program. Like I said, it would be an IEP team discussion and a need, and then the focus should be, student needs would be on activities of daily living, independent living skills, vocational skills, and community access skills. So how do our students navigate the community? And I just included the regulation section there that outlines programs for older adults, older students. And this was pictures of a great adapted ice skating that I got the opportunity to go to. I did not get on any ice skates. As you can see, I'm on the sidelines taking the pictures of students doing an adapted ice skating, but I just wanted to highlight some of those community access things, things that our students with disabilities can't access in the community. Our game program staff are really able to connect them to those things.
So moving on, a little bit on the Wilson reading program. So right now, we are implementing a professional learning community for teachers that are implementing the Wilson reading system in their classrooms, and that will be taken monthly and it'll be done virtually so that we have a great deal of flexibility as far as on timing and being able to collect staff. It is focusing on all aspects of Wilson intervention programming, including progress monitoring, how to implement different things, different tricks of the trade of that more experienced providers are able to share out creative solutions to barriers in progress. And the participants are all teachers implementing the Wilson reading intervention program. So that's something that will be of a great value to our teachers, really looking forward to implementing it.
So professional development for this year, I just wanted to highlight when we were here, I think it was November or October, we were here, we were kind of highlighting the upcoming professional development for some of our staff. So I figured I'd circle back with all of you and talk a little bit about what professional development we have done over the year for a lot of our special education staff. So we did have our staff that are participating in Lynda Moot Bell curriculums participate in a PLC or a professional learning community in the areas of Just Words, Seeing Stars on Cloud Nine are some of the curriculums that they reviewed. So they were able to participate in that, which they found a lot of value in, and that's why we really are shifting to doing that Wilson PLC and continuing with that because our teachers really felt like just to get together with folks that are doing the same interventions is really nice because sometimes you can be a little siloed in a building doing certain specific interventions. So getting together as a group is a nice way to discuss those things. So we did have that Lynda Moot Bell. We continued with our safety care professional development for staff that need training in de-escalation or the physical management component that is involved in safety care. So that continued throughout the year. I think we had three, we'll have one more, so it'll be three initial trainings, which is a two-day training for staff. And then we had many recertifications this year to make sure that we keep people that are needing to be recertified in that program. You do need to be recertified every year. So that is a one-day training for our recertification. Of course, our speech and language pathologists, we've really, well, I would say for all of our related service providers, we've been able to have them share their wealth a little bit in some professional development for other staff. So some of our paraprofessionals received professional development from speech and language this year, from our school psychologists and school adjustment counselors this year, from our behavior specialists and BCBA's this year. Our speech and language pathologist trained all of our paraprofessionals on augmentative and alternative communication, so AAC devices, what students might utilize an AAC device and how they should be utilizing it, how our paraprofessionals can generate that in a classroom environment. We also had our school psychologists train our paraprofessionals on the zones of regulation, which is another curriculum that our school psychologists and school adjustment counselors utilize. And that really focuses in on a curriculum in emotion regulation. And then we've also had our BCBA's train our staff members on discrete trial training and any ABA techniques, our paraprofessionals. And then also, we've had our literacy coordinators and math coordinators do some great work with our paraprofessionals on how to navigate that in the classroom with students, how to break down and teach different skills alongside a teacher in the classroom. So we really utilized the strengths and expertise we have in the district to train some of our paraprofessionals this year. And then our related service providers themselves focused on their own professional development for the times that they weren't training others. So our school psychologists really focused in on this year additional testing materials that have recently been released, reviewing them as a group, discussing how they might work with their students that they are testing or assessing as a part of the initial or reevaluation process. Our speech and language pathologists are working on a philosophy for our district on AAC or augmentative and alternative communication so that, you know, when we're talking about that topic with other teachers, with parents, we really have a good lens to look at that and hone in on that with our staff members and parents. So that's been some work that they've been doing this, this school year. Our BCBA's have really been really focused in on safety care and making sure our staff are trained the way they need to be trained. But we've also done some work with our BCBA's on research on trauma-informed care and how that plays in with applied behavior analysis. So that's been something that our BCBA's have been really focused in on this year as something that has come up for them. I think that's it. Oh, including our, of course, our building-based professional development. So a lot of our special education staff have participated in our STAR testing and assessment professional development, our universal design for learning at the secondary level professional development. So it's really been, I think, an enriching year for our special education team.
New IEP. I feel like this should have one of those.
Dun, 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 like the Darth Vader walk. So the Department of Education has established a new IEP. They've done a lot of work on an improvement project to generate an IEP shifting from our current version, which of course is an undertaking for us as a school district to shift the way we've written IEPs, the way the IEP is formatted into a new formatting. So a lot goes into that. So we do have plans. The Department of Education has given school districts the choice between rolling out for the 23, 24 school year or the 24 to 25. We're going to go with the 24, 25 so we can make sure that we are doing all we need to do to make sure everyone is informed about the new IEP and has a good understanding. I think the key components of that are professional development for our staff. Our team chair persons are actually going tomorrow to a conference that focuses in on the new IEP because that's, that's our front line for writing the IEP is our team chairs. And then the other piece that I think is really important to Bob and I is an informational opportunity for parents and guardians. So what our parents and guardians are going to be getting is going to look drastically different than what they have previously gotten in the past. Hits the same components, but in a very different format. So we want to make sure we give plenty of opportunities for our parents and guardians to really look at it with us, for us to discuss what might look different for their IEP that they're getting. So I think that that's why we wanted to wait, you know, another year. We want to make sure we have enough time that when it is fully rolled out, everyone knows what it looks like, everyone has, you know, gotten their questions answered along the way. Some of the major takeaways that we've had for the new IEP, the Department of Education has really increased its focus on transition planning. So for some of you that have older students, the transition planning form at the, kind of at the end of the IEP is going to be really integrated throughout the whole IEP, which I think is a great new addition, huge thing for our students because ideally you want to focus on that even from pre-K all the way up to, you know, when a student graduates, like where is this student going after school? It really plays on what we try to do as educators and focus on that lifelong learning, not just kind of getting through school.
If I may, that's going to be one of the major shifts in the IEP, though, because here in Massachusetts, academics is still the primary focus as you work through the high school IEP. But in the high school, the focus is really going to be about transition and how do the activities it is that you do as a part of the IEP actually foster the most independent and the best transition results for students? So that is a positive change.
Yes.
It's just getting people comfortable. Change is stressful for everybody, and it's getting people comfortable with that change.
And there's also an increased focus on the individual needs of students. So there's a lot of checkboxes with a lot of dropdowns to make sure that we hit every need for every student that we have, which is wonderful. So there's an increased focus on students with EL needs or English language learners, and there's a big push for any assistive technology needs throughout the IEP so that we really can make sure that the IEP is tailored to the whole student and not just certain aspects of that student. So that, I think, is a great improvement in our IEP. And really, the goal is to be more reader and writer friendly. That was the whole goal, a little bit less narrative in an IEP and a little bit more direct, I would say, contact, content to direct our educators, our parents, our students on what the next steps are. It's also, I would say, when I said the individual needs, there's a lot more focus in involving students in the IEP process. So all really great things for the new IEP. I'm actually really looked, don't tell anyone I said this out loud, I'm actually really looking forward to rolling with this because I think those important aspects and major takeaways are huge for students and for student growth. It will just be a little bit of an undertaking from that professional development, making sure parents are informed, and also even just our electronic communication that we have, and there's a lot that will go into that. So we're definitely going to take the year that the department has given us to make sure we're doing it right. So what we're looking forward to in special education, the Best Buddies Prom is on Friday, everyone. That's a great, great event, and it actually is happening at Grafton High School this year. So we are hosting, which is wonderful, and a shout out to Lauren Mulhern, who is our Best Buddies coordinator. The professional development work for 2023, 2024, you know, I'm really proud of what we did this year, and I think we can only do more and get, you know, our staff more. Professional development will certainly include the new IEP at some point in that and making sure our staff are well-informed on how to utilize that. We're also doing some work on trauma-informed care and education and what that looks like. So kind of inquiring and getting some information in that area to help roll that out for next year as well. And then, like I said, the Wilson PLC that we'll be doing will also be hopefully expanding that beyond just Wilson and into the other specialized reading programs we have throughout the year. And Lisa Rice is going to kind of spearhead that with us. So that will definitely get done, I know that. And then, of course, the game program growth, you know, right now, because we started the game program in February, you know, a lot of our vocational job sites, a lot of our programming was fully established to kind of get through to February. So I think that we'll be able to utilize, as we roll into the fall, a little bit more of what our game program has to offer, especially in our partnership with Bread Guy breads. So that would be the goal for next year. And then, of course, continued growth and progress for all students and staff. And that's it. All right. Any questions from the committee? I'm looking at Laura first, stopping. Make sure I turn my head right first. And of course, it didn't work. Amy.
Do you want to go first?
Go ahead.
One question. You answered my question about student voice, so good. All right, I have two questions. The new IEP, I assume you will be returning to present to us about how that's going.
Yes.
Is it based on work that's been done elsewhere in the country or in other countries?
So actually, from my perspective, as somebody who spent a good part of their career in Rhode Island, much of the new IEP is taken whole cloth from the Rhode Island IEP, especially when you talk about low incidence populations like ELL learners, students with visual problems, assistive technology, just to make sure that IEP teams consider those sorts of things as they kind of go through the process, as opposed to just if nobody brings it up, it just kind of goes by the wayside. So there was some of those things. Also, the fact that transition having a more preeminent role in the front of the IEP for secondary as opposed to where it is now at the end of the IEP is something that most states have already adopted. So much of what it is, not all, but some of it is the ways it is that they have, what it is that are specific to the four core academic areas, ELA, math, science, and social studies, is a little bit different in the Massachusetts IEP than I've seen in other IEPs, but much of the rest of it has been already trialed in other states.
Awesome. And I will say, all the aspects of the old IEP are still there. They're just in different spots to put a different focus on different things.
But there's some areas, so for example, the PLEP A and B, I've never been a fan of, just because of the way that it's laid out, you know, what information goes where and all the rest of that, all the rest of that. I think that the new IEP is much clearer in its intention of what that area is supposed to actually do for kids.
And the PLEP A and B is where we outline any accommodations the student needs or what those modifications are. So I think those will be a lot clearer in the new IEP as well.
And who would, what area it applies to, because you might need an accommodation in math, but not necessarily needed in ELA, and this IEP drills right down to the subject area.
Oh, that sounds great. I would assume it's going to be easy for parents to understand.
Yes, that's the hope.
That can be tough. Okay, my last question. You mentioned teachers who are implementing Wilson. Can you give me a sense of what percentage of classrooms that represents, and are we moving everybody toward Wilson?
So no, so to qualify for Wilson, you have to have a significant reading disability, several years, several grade, several years below grade level. But in addition to that, it has to be around your basic reading skills. So these are the students, when they talk about dyslexia, dyslexia is on a spectrum, so much like we think of autism spectrum disorder. You have some students that have it mild and some students that have it very, very significant. The Wilson program is really for those students who have those really significant reading issues that really struggle with making sense of what it is that sounds are and how it is that those come together to make words, to make sense of type. So as it currently stands, we have, I believe we're projected to have two Wilson teachers in each one of the elementary schools next year, and then we have one full-time in the middle school and one full-time in the high school, okay, which I would throw against any school district in the country with regards to that. I mean, that is a lot of reading services to ensure that our students are getting their needs met. Part of it also has to do with the fact that there's been a renewed emphasis on dyslexia in general in reading, is a preeminent focus in education. In addition to that, we also had our COVID situation, and that really impacted those students in their reading. So all of those things have really kind of created a larger need than we anticipate as we continue to implement this program that we'll have in the future.
Thank you.
Yours, did you agree?
Yeah, I did. So Amy partially asked about the Wilson. No, I wanted to know how many Wilson certified teachers we had, but also.
So, excuse me, when I said that, those are the teachers that are currently teaching Wilson as their full-time position. We have a lot of other staff that are also certified in it or might have a Wilson group here or there, but they're not full-time Wilson teachers. So I just wanted to clarify that.
That's even better, that they're full-time Wilson teachers. So building off of that, the PLCs, are those specific only to our district or are we connecting people with other, connecting with other districts?
So we've had one.
Okay, fair.
Last month.
Right. But our plans are.
Our second one is tomorrow, so that's exciting, tomorrow morning. Thus far, we've started in district, and that is mainly kind of run by Lisa Rice with my participation, all our Wilson teachers. We set an agenda and have certain topics that we're addressing. One of the major topics that a lot of our teachers are bringing up is liking student engagement. And how do you get a group of three to four kids that are struggling to read to engage in that Wilson? So we're pulling in all the stops, we're pulling in different, luckily I get to participate. So, you know, talking about behavior and how to get some engagement, how can we set up different systems within your Wilson group to set them up for success, those kind of things. So we're definitely starting internally and seeing, you know, what comes out of it? Do people find the value in it? And does it lend to improvement for students would be our first focus? And then I'm sure Lisa Rice would love to take that to the entire world, so that may be the next step.
That's great, though, and if it's going to extend to some of the Lynda Moot Bell and so that's.
Yes.
Actually, that happened kind of in the reverse. How that all came to fruition was we had sent some teachers to get on Cloud Nine Training, which is a Lynda Moot Bell program to help those students that struggle with reading, but it's application in math, because students with dyslexia also greatly struggle with math sense frequently. And so they're kind of a comorbidity, if you will. So we had reached out to them specifically to get some training on on Cloud Nine, and as the discussions with the Lynda Moot Bell representatives grew and the number of people it is that we have implementing Lynda Moot Bell programs, some of whom who've been certified for 10 years or more, well, the program has also evolved and everything. And so from that, we had a discussion invested in the Lynda Moot PLCs, the professional learning communities, which have been happening monthly since September.
Yep.
And those became very, very popular and kind of as a result of that, and Lisa Rice participating in some of those, came the development of the idea of because we're implementing so many of the Wilson programs, we should do something similar with Wilson as well. So it really has worked out very, very well.
That's great.
And we actually, even just out of our first, this is any indication of how it will go, just out of our first session, we were really talking about how to get parents informed about what a Wilson, you know, session actually looks like. So Kristen Barone has already started making videos or those looms. She's fantastic at a loom, to just show like at each step, like this is the focus for this step for parents so that our Wilson teachers can like, oh, yeah, your student moved to step 2.1, here's a video of what we'll be working on on step 2.1. So that was just out of our March PLC. So I think that like a lot of great, wonderful things are going to come out of this, so I'm hopeful that it's something that works well for our staff as well.
That's awesome. Great. And then I just had one other question about AAC. So you referenced sort of training everybody on our district's philosophy on AAC, so I just wanted to ask what that is.
That's a great question.
Are we, do we feel like we're using AAC enough? Do we need to do more, you know, what, I guess, yeah, what's the philosophy?
Yeah, I would say the AAC kind of philosophy in general has, I would say, shifted even over kind of my time in education. It's really become much more prominent, and it's become a lot more of, just especially with advances in technology and what we can provide to students, it's really become something of a necessity for kids as opposed to like a luxury where it maybe used to be. So our speech and language pathologist used our last PD day to really hash through a bunch of research that they collected, you know, collecting research from their organization, ASHA, on any myths about AAC, any kind of things that maybe folks that have been practicing for a long time didn't get, that some of our newer folks that are practicing got as a part of their kind of education and instruction. So as a group, they're kind of working through those pieces. Our hope is to kind of come up with like, almost like, let's try for two to three like sentences about what our viewpoint is on AAC and the importance of it so that when we are discussing that, we all have kind of a lens that we're working in. So we're not quite done with that work, but I believe we're going to continue that work at the May professional development half day.
And typically, do you find that we're recommending use of, say, a device or are the families coming to us with?
Those recommendations.
Those recommendations from an outside.
I would say that we more often than not are coming up with those recommendations.
Okay, cool.
I would say just probably this year at our preschool level, we've had a number of students that have been recommended for a dedicated device as an option to the multiple different modes of communication that we're presenting to them. So we have been able to do that and provide that with the assistance of our tech department to make sure that students are able to communicate. We never want to, not that we have our lens yet, but we do view AAC as a student's voice. So you wouldn't leave your voice box, you know, over on the shelf over there, it would be next to you the whole time. You'd have the option to select what you need to select to get your point across. So we definitely have that along with sign verbalizations, picture supports, any other kind of modes of communication.
Thank you. Other questions, Laura?
Thank you. Thank you both so much, and congratulations on the game program, you know, how much you've worked on it, so it's wonderful to see it. Bob, I have a question, something you said kind of sparked something I was trying to think about. So I think obviously we're still dealing with COVID fallout. You mentioned the increase of Wilson to address some of the learning needs of our students post-COVID. What would you see are some of the trends still, and what are we doing to combat that where students may need a little extra support?
I would, in my opinion, the biggest
I would, in my opinion, the biggest obstacle that we have facing us post-COVID is some students still struggling with daily school attendance.
Attendance.
Yes. And it's, for some students, it's, you know, a mild struggle, but for other students, it's quite substantial, and it, and it's more entrenched than any time that I've ever seen in my career. You know, we have students that typically would be attending school, you know, on a routine basis, but just right now are just really struggling with it. So that's been, in my opinion, the biggest challenge it is that we face. It's certainly reflective of our student support programs and the students that are within the student support programs. And, you know, it's, it's not, the students have mental health challenges, but those mental health challenges, it's not like they're necessarily new, it's just that not going to school was never an option before it is the COVID. For a while, going to school was an option, because you couldn't go to school, and then you had remote versus, you know, in-person learning. Well, for some students, they've just really, really struggled with resuming daily school attendance. So that really, in my opinion, is the biggest.
Are you seeing that across the board from pre-K through high school? Is it?
I can speak definitively that I'm seeing it in the, the middle and high school levels. I can't say so much at the elementary level.
Element, I would say our two to six buildings struggle with that as well. That's probably where it starts. We do see it less, I would say, pre-K to one, I'm sure the parents are like, eh. But our, our two to six, yeah, I, I think we do see that. I will say that it is small pockets, but our small pockets of that attendance challenge is significant.
Yeah, yeah. And I know, and we've talked, it's come up a little bit before, and we've talked a little about the difference between somebody who's sick for five days versus, this is like extended absences and things like that. Okay. Thank you, that was thought-provoking. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I had a bunch of questions, and they were all covered by a very like-minded committee today, I guess. The only question I had left was, do you feel that you have enough para coverage? Do you have enough parents to fit the needs of all the kids who need them? Or is that an issue at all?
I, I mean, it's always a thing, because that does tend to be, and I think we've talked about this before, that does tend to be our top area of turnover. We have, you know, a lot of paraprofessionals are either continuing their growth and becoming teachers or becoming whatever their, you know, future goals are. Or, you know, it's also one of our, I would say, more challenging positions in a school district is to be a paraprofessional. So sometimes, you know, that is also a factor for, for some folks. So we are in good shape right now. We're pretty well-covered, which is wonderful. I feel good saying that. But like I said, we, we do have some turnover always throughout the year and over the summer. So that, you know, is kind of, we're always hiring, I would say, paraprofessionals.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank Bob and Nicole for the fantastic work they've done all year. Definitely, they share what I would consider one of the, the most challenging positions in any school district. On top of everything this year, due to a staffing issue in the fall, Bob has filled in as the team chair at GHS while also being the co-director, making, Nicole, there was more therefore on her plate. So they both just worked so beautifully to address a, a major staffing issue that we had. And I think that, I know that the students and the staff were very well-served with basically no break in, in services. So they've just gone so far above and beyond, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next time, bring bread. We're waiting. What?
We're the only ones who've not gotten bread.
You can work on that. Next up, the superintendent evaluation. Katie, you have something to present?
Yeah, not much. So I provided all the school committee members with the filled-out rubric attached to the standards, and then the most updated update on my three goals. So I'll just run through this quickly and take any questions you might have. So we're in the fifth part of the six-piece cycle for superintendent evaluation that takes place every year, starting in August and going all the way through till May. So we've got some sort of evaluation coming up at the next meeting. That's made up of two things, the goals and the standards. I've presented at least twice on the goals during the year. You may recall back in September, it included self-assessment. You have to have at least two goals, I had three, and then you collect evidence and present the school committee as we go along, and we've done that. Then with the rubric, there are four standard areas: instructional leadership, management and operations, engagement, and professional culture. And they're broken down into various pieces, and I basically went through that rubric, and I gave myself a grade, if you will. There are four standard areas that I just touched on in four levels of performance. So exemplary, I think of it as an A, proficient, a B, needs improvement, C, and unsatisfactory, D, or you could go with F. In a very generalized sense, I gave myself an overall rating of proficient. I had a couple exemplaries, or a few exemplaries pieces in there, but overall, I rated myself as proficient. For most of them, I provided some sort of evidence. You'll see there a PowerPoint, or a report, or what have you. Nothing provided should be a surprise to you, but it was just to make it a little more accessible. If, as you go through the rubric, you see something that you want more information on, you just reach out to me, and I'll provide it not only to you, but the entire committee. In terms of my self-assessment, looking forward, we're going to, I am going to be working on maintaining that focus on the strategic plan and building upon it. We've got some momentum going with our wellness committee. We have a tech plan that's going to go before the school committee, the draft possibly in June, but certainly in the fall. So I want to continue to build on that. I, I do love that our strategic plan has been streamlined, like, pretty significantly. I think that's been really great for us over the past two years. In the next two years, we're going to need an operational override. I want to get ahead of that in terms of communication around the budget. There's one thing to do, to communicate the budget when things are pretty stable and pretty good. It's a whole different ballgame when you're looking at an override. So obviously, I'd like to get ahead of that. We've talked a lot about assessment data to build on that, continue the momentum that we, we have in existence right now. And I'm always looking to increase connections to students, to staff, get into schools more. Always trying to figure out ways to structure things district-wide to be as efficient as possible, which would allow for, for that to happen. I mentioned that I had three goals, I won't read them to you, but they're around communication, coordination, and meeting the needs of all students. The first one, communication of school department budgetary needs. We implemented that new timeline, increased collaboration with the municipal side, so Evan and Mary in particular. We've now fully transitioned to ClearGov. I'm still struggling with, and it's a good struggle, but figuring out a way to create a book that accompanies ClearGov. ClearGov's great, like, if you want to dive into a rabbit hole, ClearGov's awesome. But to get that, that story, this year I did that executive summary, I don't know, it was like 15 pages. It, it was good, a good 15 pages. Knowing that an override is eventually going to be on the horizon, I want to make that, I don't know, there's not a magic number, but 30, 40 pages, more in-depth, and potentially connect that executive summary of sorts to ClearGov. So if you want more information, here's the link to it. The ADA assessment, I think that's, we had that last year. The piece that we focused on this year is securing monies, or money for the actual ADA work. Right now, we have $400,000 between earmarks, ADA, I'm sorry, not ADA, ARPA funding and capital funding. So this summer, right now, we're working on a plan to use that $400,000. Obviously, I wish it was $4 million, but $400,000, well, we'll make that go a long way. And long-range forecasting, we have done, where just this week, reached back out to Nezdeq. They do an annual update, but as you've seen from just driving around town, there's so much construction going on, that I've asked them to go above and beyond their typical, they send like a two-page update. We don't need the full assessment, but I need something more robust to give us a good idea, a better idea of where, where they anticipate us being in terms of enrollment over the next five years. Coordination of student services, we've talked about increasing elementary counseling, increased it last year. In the budget, assuming it passes a town meeting, we will add an additional counselor at the pre-K through one level. Nicole talked about the paraprofessional shift. We've talked about specialized programming. Obviously, GAIN jumps out, but we've done a lot of work to strengthen the specialized programming that we have that's really helping us retain a tremendous number of students in Grafton. Jake Cody spoke to the GHS internship program. I'm excited to have that now back on track post-COVID. And increased adjustment counselor coordination. We've taken some steps forward this year, and I think next year, with moving some responsibilities around, we'll be able to do even better in that area. And then meeting the needs of all students, talked about data systems. I highlighted the vaping cessation program. I'm glad that we have one. It's, I think, working pretty well. We want to take that to the next level. We've met a few times with Worcester Health Alliance. They have a number of resources, actual people who we can tap into being a partner in that program. So we're working with them. Ideally, next year, we'd have that, basically, a video-based program, but that would be coupled by an actual person with expertise in this area to come in and work with our students, especially the students that we have who have a real addiction issue. It's not, they were, their third time trying it with their friend, you know, that, that's a real issue. But the student who just feels like they need nicotine or whatever it might be on a regular basis, that's a, that's a whole different story. And that district and town equity assessment, that's in process right now. They, we put out the survey, they received all the results, they broke the results down, and now they are planning to come in and have focus groups to dive into those findings from the survey. In terms of next steps with the evaluation, I shared what Lou Booty provided to me with teach point access and instructions. If you have any issues along the way, Lou is fantastic. You can reach out to me or Lou directly, but she will get right back to you, and she's, she's top-notch. Obviously, you all know that the next steps include the assessments being provided to the chair, who will put them all together and have the completed evaluation presented on May 9. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
And I had emailed everyone and asked for those by next Monday, May 1. So if there's any challenges to getting that done, or if you have any questions for me, or for, or you can ask Amy and Laura, we've also done this a number of times, but just let us know. All right, thanks. Any other, any questions?
I had a question.
Yeah.
So I wanted to know if there was like one or two things this year that really surprised you, whether they were good things or bad things. Like, what, what two things this year, maybe three, really caused you to step back for a second?
Well, it's great not to be dealing with COVID, that's obvious, but that was, that's phenomenal. Probably the biggest, I guess, surprise of this, not that I couldn't see it coming, but the, the degree of this issue and how long-lasting it is, is how so many people, students and staff, still are struggling getting back into the swing of things. When Bob talked about attendance, I think we've touched on that a few times, but that's a huge issue. And it's not just in Grafton, it's, it's everywhere, but an unprecedented level that I've, I've never seen in my career. We do have, put a task force together to look at best practices, what you can do, what's been in existence around that. And I'm using this as basically just a metaphor. With attendance, pre-COVID, it was super-scripted. It was, you're out a bunch of times, you get a letter that's supposed to kind of scare the parent and the kid. Like, if not, you know, you don't, we're going to report you, and then you might have to go to court. And everybody pretty much would respond. Now the numbers are just so large, and the needs, students aren't missing school for the most part to stay home and just play Xbox. I mean, there, there are some real, there's some real trauma that exists, and parents understandably don't know how to address it. Often, I think coming to school every day seems like the least of their worries and problems. So that, that magnitude, we've seen it just across the board in terms of, of needs. And that, that's been a huge challenge. At the beginning of the year, it was magnified, Nicole touched on it, but we had such turnover and inability to find people to fill, like, para roles. Wasn't a Grafton issue, it was everywhere, but our reality is Grafton. We could not find people. So we had our staff, instead of having preps, they're covering additional classes, they're covering for paras. We've got, we had principals, assistant principals, just about everybody is doing more than they normally would. I touched on Bob filling in as team chair. That is a full-time job at a high school plus, and being a co-director. We saw that across the board all year. And it's, it's, I think things are improving, but it wasn't like it was tough for two months and everybody bounced back. I am on the very positive side. Despite all of that, I think of the work that, again, Nicole touched on, Lisa Rice around literacy with the STAR assessment. I, we are, we're not just saying, oh, everybody's, it's a tough year, let's not move forward. We're definitely trying to move forward, and I've been impressed with, despite all the challenges, that the staff has, has gone with us. So that's been a fantastic thing. And my last thing, I think the students have been incredibly resilient, and have been throughout. But this year was the first year it felt like, kid-wise, we were kind of back. I know there's still a lot of stress, a lot of struggle, et cetera, but to go to Mean Girls, to see the sports in action, just to be in the schools, we're definitely bouncing back in terms of that day-to-day student experience.
Thank you. Anything else? No? Okay. Thank you. Do you want to go right into a superintendent report? Do you have anything today?
Yeah, I don't have much, but it is.
Kind of touched on it a little bit, I guess, with Amy's and Laura's questions.
I had three quick things, let me see if I can find it. Okay. Brian Forbes, many of you might know Brian. He's GPS of law, and he went through our 18 to 22 program as well. Just a wonderful young, young man. Now he's 24, which makes me feel very old. He is going to be throwing out the ceremonial first pitch at the Woo Sox game on Sunday, which is awesome. Huge Red Sox fan. If you've ever been up near South Grafton Elementary, he's got the longest-running lemonade stand, I think, in the history of lemonade stands, like, 20 years. So anyhow, he was selected, and it's a Grafton theme, I forget what it's called, something with the Woo Sox, Grafton Takes Over the Woo Sox.
Grafton Night at the Woo Sox, or something like that.
Town takeover.
Town takeover.
Town takeover, yeah, yeah, yeah. So anyhow, huge shout-out to Brian for that. I wanted to thank the Grafton Cultural Council. This is old, but I don't think I ever, it's a few months back, but I don't think I ever publicly thanked them. It was Alan Baker, actually, who emailed me saying, we're offering, the council is offering scholarships, and we haven't seen anything from the schools, which was a great heads-up, because I had missed it entirely. We were able to secure, secure a $1,500 grant for a speaker series focused on DEI at GMS and GHS. Awesome. And finally, I wanted to congratulate GHS senior Cora Talifer. She earned the prestigious Girl Scout Gold Award, their highest award, and she's going to be recognized for her accomplishment in June. That's all I have.
Can I ask one question?
Of course.
Sort of, you did present that as your report, but you did mention it in response Sort of, you didn't present that as your report, but you did mention it in response to Amy's question. It's just kind of burning with me. Have you seen other districts? Have you talked to other superintendents about the attendance?
Oh, yeah.
Thing? And how, have you gotten any sense? Are they still just kind of struggling with, A, whether it's an issue or not, or whether it's a?
I think universally, I think everybody, everybody that I've talked to definitely sees it as an issue.
Yeah.
I mean, they see the same trauma, just getting, we spend an unbelievable amount of resources to get students to be at school every day. It's one thing sometimes just to get the car into the parking lot and the two staff to get. Everybody's struggling with it. We've done with that task force, I've kind of taken the lead with the research into best practices. There is no, there are best practices, but there is no kind of low-cost, easy solution to this. Urban districts have been struggling with that issue for years and years. So it's actually pretty well documented what works, what doesn't work. Everything that we've found so far is definitely labor-intensive. If you can do it, you'd combine community resources. If we had a bunch of school resource officers, we'd use potentially resource officers in collaboration with our school staff, and you'd actually have staff dedicated to that, that reaching out, the home visits, that type of thing. We're doing home visits. We did, I didn't do it, but I know at the middle school level, we, they did them yesterday, which is great, but we don't have dedicated staff to that. Like when the principal and assistant principal go out to visit a home for two hours, that's great, super important, but we're, we're covering in the meantime. So once we kind of figure out a game plan, where we're going, what we're going to do is basically try some different approaches with small numbers of students who have chronic absenteeism. This isn't the, you know, once every four weeks. This is the, they've been out at this point of the year 40, 50 times.
But you've said that the students you're seeing, you know, these aren't kids who are at home playing video games. These are kids that have, that are either, they're sick.
That's not the cause. I skipped school once to go play, I don't know. I think the thought was wiffle ball with Todd Richmond in some field, and we were bored in half an hour. So I think they might be playing Xbox, but that's not what's driving them not being in school.
Mental issues or it's, it's physical health.
We're trying to, as a community, do more, not only schools, but with ARPA funds. I've talked to the town administrator about us doing the best we can as a community to provide better health services. A lot of the parents either, for whatever reason, can't access supports outside of school. Well, I get it, schools are super important, but in, add up all the time kids spend in school over the course of the year, you're looking at like 15%. It's not that, that much time. Six hours a day for 180 days is, it's something, and we're going to do the best we can with what that is. But for the most part, the needs are simply outweighing what we can provide for and what's happening in reality in terms of healthcare and access. We do use, and we've consistently increased our use of outside services, be it UINC. We contract with different groups to work with us to provide services, but it is an uphill battle for sure. So once, we've only met, I don't know, maybe four times. So once we can have our work together more and start taking action, whether it works or doesn't work, I'll definitely have that group report out to school committee.
I think it's a challenge because during COVID and even after COVID, however you want to mark the end of COVID, you know, we were always telling students, stay home when you're sick, stay home when you're sick. If you feel bad, stay home when you're sick. And, and it used to be, I think, you know, kids had a little cold or cough or something, fine, send them to school. But, you know, we kind of went through this transition where everyone was hearing, stay home, stay home, stay home. And I don't know how much that is playing into this and whether or not we want people to change in that practice or not, but.
Yeah, I don't know if, if we do. I certainly don't, what we're looking at, I forget how we termed it at the time, and this went back. Now we've obviously had more days of school, but when we initially were looking at it, I want to say 30 to 50 days out of, say, 120 at the time, maybe even less. That was, I mean, that's a lot of colds.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay.
No, now that, so I guess, yeah, because I think that's a different thing, but it like, this is a systemic issue with certain kids. Obviously, it's not, I don't know what the percentage is, but have we, so when does that move into retention and not moving forward? Let's say you miss 50, 60 days, but you're still managing, your grades are fine. Like when, when do we start looking at that? And we probably already do.
There's definitely not a magic number. We would try to utilize, I mean, depending on the grade level, credit recovery, summer work. You ideally don't want to couple the issue.
Right, I know, yeah.
Basically, school phobia or you have mental health issues that you're wrestling with, and now you're going to be the kid who's, you know, in little Grafton. Everybody's going to know, you know, oh, the new kid, oh, he stayed back or she stayed.
Right, no, totally understood.
Not the end of the world, but we're facing, we're going to be probably facing more of those discussions as we go forward. But so far, we, we've minimized that.
Right. I mean, I totally get that too, but you want to make sure kids are, maybe they need to take the time to get, get where they need to be before they can.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I got you. It's definitely tough.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, thanks. Especially like, I think Bob mentioned, kids perhaps got comfortable with online schooling, with homeschooling and said, oh, this is for me. This, this feels good. And then they have to go back to being at school again.
It can be hard to re-engage, I think, from anything, even, at least for me, the day you go back to work from, say, a week off. And if you really haven't been working during your vacation, it's, I don't sleep great that night. I think it's that magnified by 50.
I mean, I can relate to it. I'm lucky, I, for the past five years, I've basically been working from home versus a consultant. And now my company, I go into the office like once, maybe three times a week, so I'm very comfortable with that. And if I had to, like you, if I had to go into the office every single day, you know, that'd be a struggle for me. So I can, I can relate to that, that struggle a little bit, but. Okay, one more question.
One more, I promise. So has there been any discussion around, and I know that online schooling is not ideal, and it's certainly not for everybody. Has there any, been any discussion, because this is happening all over the state, of the state loosening the restrictions around online schooling and allowing kids to maybe do edgenuity as they work their way back?
Yep. We do utilize edgenuity more than we ever have before, and that's been fantastic. There's a huge distinction in the eyes of Desi between a course, two courses, a credit recovery in the summer and doing that full-time. In their eyes, simply put, you would, that student would enroll in TECA. So I don't know what, beyond that, I haven't heard anything, but I really haven't had my finger on that pulse either about the future of that.
I just feel like they're really out of touch. Not that that's news, but I feel like they don't necessarily understand why this is happening. And they, you know, I know that they're putting the pressure on districts to get kids in seats and get them to school, but.
Sure.
But it's almost like somebody needs to tell them, hey, you know, we need to pause here, address the mental health situation so that we can get these kids back in a meaningful capacity, as opposed to sitting in a classroom feeling scared or uncomfortable and not able to learn, because that doesn't, that doesn't solve the problem at all.
I think that meant personally, that mental health piece is obviously the most, in my eyes, the most critical piece, because without that, that student who doesn't want to attend school, doesn't want to engage for whatever reason, let's go with parent, parents both work, you know, full-time, that individual being on edgenuity at home, maybe while the mental health isn't being addressed, that's not, in my mind, that's a worry.
Right.
Like doing one piece without that mental health piece, I would not be a huge proponent of that personally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student representative reports.
So AP exams are starting next week. So let's wish all those students luck and a good night's sleep for the next couple of weeks because they're going to need it. The senior class is planning to have their class trip to Six Flags on May 26, which is also their last day of classes, so yay.
Last day of class at Six Flags, okay.
And also, Dr. Cummings, it's funny that you mentioned the Woo Sox because the high school chamber choir is actually singing the national anthem there this Sunday, so.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you for doing it.
Okay, and then May 16th and 17th is Math M. Casper, grade 10. The senior and junior prom is next week, May 6, and then May 1 is college and career decision day for seniors.
Lot going on the next few weeks.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Ms. Hoffman's looking at me.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I did make my decision.
You did? Did you want to share publicly, or is that something you'd like to keep to yourself?
I'm going Northeastern for mechanical engineering.
Does it have another female engineer in there?
Yes.
And a Broadway career on the side.
Oh, yeah, obviously.
Did either of you attend the college fair right before the break?
I did, yeah.
And did you find it helpful?
I liked it. I, I heard from a lot of people that they really like, like they actually found it helpful, yeah.
Different districts were there. I thought that was nice. Good.
All right, thank you. Well, good luck with everything you have going, and have fun at prom and Six Flags. Of course, we'll see you before then, but we'll see you before prom, so have fun. All right. Next, we have future agenda planning.
Good night.
Good night.
I just think.
Oh, I thought you were saying, can I? Oh, okay.
Oh, no.
Can I? Can I? I thought you were going to.
No, I'm just saying good night.
All right, well, as always, you can always email me, and we can make any adjustments necessary. But my document's not open, opening, but it does say that the, what's it, the May 8 meeting, there's, we are talking about the, is that the evaluation, right, or May 9 meeting?
Yeah, we moved.
So it should be my evaluation. GHS will do their school update. I'm going to share with you.
We need to put that there then, the evaluation on May 9.
I, I did update it.
Oh, you did?
It was in the book. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I will add to it that it's a school update for GHS. They need their school improvement plan, consider it and vote it on. Ideally, they need that for the knee ask. So I actually have a copy. I just haven't shared it yet. And I haven't got a confirmation from food service yet, but I've asked Whitson's to come in.
And I guess we'll have rework June 6.
Right.
Let's see, and I'll try to introduce the calendar for next year. We can try to do that by then as well.
Yep.
And then we can talk.
Any other meetings in, because election and the?
Yeah, why don't we have a second meeting?
Why don't we have a 23rd meeting?
I don't know.
Do we have to talk about?
Well, yeah, I would think, I would think we would probably do, because June is when it gets a little nutty. I would think we would do the rework on the 23rd. Because elections are the 16th, and then we would have the 23rd, and then we would figure out. But sometimes we move the G, yeah, and then maybe June we go into a little more.
Yeah, I don't see any reason we wouldn't have that meeting then, I think.
I'll check.
Double check.
Not that we can't have it somewhere else, but something, this is what we forget, but something must have triggered it.
Something must have triggered, check on that.
It's a big night, all the programs are.
Something that I would complain about having a meeting on.
That we all have complained about over the years. Why do we have a meeting tonight? We finally fixed it, and now we're saying, why don't we have a meeting?
Can't fix, can't, can't please me.
I'll check on that.
Cannot please me.
Okay, all right, thanks. So if there's no obstacle for us to having the May 23 meeting, you said it was 20, it's a 23, right?
Yeah, I'm just looking at my calendar, yeah.
We'll have that and rework on that today and.
But I would guess so morose, because next, last meeting's probably the 9th. Let's go see how it looks.
Well, it's the 9th. Oh, yeah. Goodness.
Okay.
Okay. All right, approval of minutes, we have, but no set of meeting minutes. So happy that we're.
I know.
Had up on these. Great. Let's see. Actually, where is it? Why is it not in my, is it in that package?
It is.
It is, okay. Okay, yeah, I know I saw it earlier. It's weird how.
It's there somewhere. I saw it on the drive.
Popping up, my computer's just.
Do you want me to make a motion while you look for it?
You can make a motion anytime, sure.
Oh, okay. I move that the committee adopt the minutes of April 11th, 2023 as presented. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing, I did review that earlier. I was just bringing it up just to breeze through while we're talking, so. All those in favor? I, motion carries. All right, thank you. Next, we have a warrant. We have one warrant. I'm going to motion to approve that, if anyone desires.
I'm chair. I motion to approve warrant 42 dated for 202023 for the amount of $203,270.35.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the warrant? And then, all those in favor? Motion, motion carries. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Yes.
I'm so sorry. Can we go back to future agenda planning?
Yes, absolutely.
This is my fault. I didn't check. I had asked last week to put a review, put together a subcommittee to review our law firm.
Oh, yes.
Some of the summer project. Can we just get that on for next time?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I didn't catch that. Sounds like a dumbnet summer project.
Sounds great. All right, next policy. The policy subcommittee met a little while ago, and we had presented for our first reading, JICA, the student dress code. We paused, if you remember that last time. We wanted our legal counsel to take a look at it. I think that has happened.
It has happened, and it has been approved. She was fine with it. She, Jay forwarded us comments.
Oh, I didn't see that.
The original ones are in the drive. I took and just cleaned it up because she had some comments, but she said to go ahead with it regardless. So it shouldn't be in the drive unless you took it out.
I took it out because I thought it would be confusing.
Confusing.
But I can re-add it.
No, I'm happy to explain. Her only comments, absolutely. Her only comments were on profan, profanity and pornography.
Yeah.
It could be possibly challenged. Her, but she said to leave it in. She recommended to leave it in, and then it was more about the reaction and disruption from it. So I suppose if there's no disruption, then it's fine. It's kind of a gray area, but.
I'm curious of her, what her suggestion was, though. She said, she had a suggestion, but yet she said to leave it.
She didn't have a suggestion. She just made, had a comment. The comment was that it could potentially be challenged, but she recommended that we leave it in. Yeah. So, you know, I was thinking it through, and I was like, you know, my only concern about that is, like, let's say I'm wearing a nice dress and my lovely legs cause a disruption. You know, is that my fault? No. So, but we will, we'll go from there. I mean, I get what, I get it overall, don't laugh. But like, you know, like, you know what I mean? Like, I was thinking it through, like, what's a disruption? Like, is it the kid, you know, if, if you can't control yourself because I have nice legs, is that my fault?
Jay, can you find the language where it talks about the disruption on there? So we can all see that.
Do you know? If you see it.
I don't see it.
Is it under? You're right there. Nope, scroll up. Okay, right there. It's the bullet point in the middle. Clothing must not threaten the health or safety of any other student or staff and must not cause any disruption or disorder within the school.
Right.
Yeah, it's a little ambiguous, right?
So I get the, like, like a hate speech on a shirt, causing a child to be uncomfortable. That to me, but then there's that whole, which I think the reason why we kind of always looked at the dress code, and I can't believe I'm bringing this up, because I was like, I'm not going to bring it up, but here I am bringing it up, is like the shoulders of the, and you read it, and the boys are distracted by the girls. And that to me is like.
So what?
Dude, you know, so, but I. Dude, you know, so, but I also trust that we'll lose, like, common sense, hopefully we'll win out, and I don't know.
But now, that's bothering me, yeah.
I'm not happy with that language. All it takes is a couple of boys targeting, it could be another boy or girls targeting each other.
Right.
Oh, well, I'm disturbed or distracted, like, that's creating disruption, and I feel like that's loaded.
Right, so.
I mean, we say, like, what else do we, we cover?
Speak up, though, you're like the indicator.
No, I can't, I didn't mean to.
We, we, we cover pornography, nudity, sexual acts. We ta- cover hate speech. We cover the use of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana-controlled substances. What else are we worried about causing a disruption or disorder that we may need, we could be more specific with, unless, instead of making it, you know, something that allows kids to be disrupted by.
I think it's just such a, like, I really struggle. I mean, I use legs as a ridiculous example. But I also think people need to, there's a limit, too, right? Like, I wouldn't go to my job dressed with, you know, I would wear a, I don't know. Like, I do think there has to be some professional, but it's such a, I know, but.
I think we're going backwards if we start saying that, right? I think.
If we say what, I missed it.
If we say there have to be professional standards, and I mean, I think, I think one of the reasons we looked at this is because a lot of commentary, where you say that you have to dress professionally or whatever, can either be gender unfair or culturally not sensitive. So I think we definitely want to stay away from that.
Yeah, no, I'm with you.
But I hear what you're saying, yeah, can someone use that language about disruption to kind of actually go backwards, right?
That is consistently the key in, in case, pass, in case law. I mean, since I went to, it's just, in, in college, we take, I'm not a lawyer, but we take law classes. It was always the classic in the world of education, a dress code project, and it was about disruption, which is vague, but I'm telling you, that is the key word. Like, I, I would guess that push came to shove, somebody wears something that depicts, I don't know, it says Guinness beer on it. If that doesn't cause a disruption, I'm gonna bet anything that wouldn't hold up when push came to shove.
What do you mean? They clearly say they can't have alcohol.
Yeah.
Doesn't.
Yeah, you can say it.
But it doesn't.
I don't think it would hold up.
Okay, well, then, if that's the, if that's the case, okay, that's, that's fine. I mean, it, you know, if we, I, in the remote possibility that we end up going to court about this, but if that's the case, then we need to qualify each one of these and say, clothing may not advocate use of alcohol, blah, 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 to the extent it causes a disruption. So that, that means, like, we, we would want to say, oh, yeah, you can wear a Guinness shirt as long as it doesn't cause a disruption. Like, I don't know, I don't know how you, you know, how you say that, because, yeah, lots of hands on.
Amy, I think you.
Yeah, I would just, I, I think we're, that's a separate issue in my mind. I think that we can solve this problem partially by striking the rest of that sentence. Clothing including gang identifiers must not threaten the health or safety of any other student or staff, period. It also says at the bottom, student's attire does not meet the above requirements, disciplinary action may result. It doesn't say that will. They could just be spoken to by a member of staff saying, you know, this is, we don't want to see these types of T-shirts at school. I think there's a difference there. Or being asked to put a shirt on. If somebody really wants to sue us for infringing on a child's right to free speech, go for it, because school districts win that almost every time. We set the rules, we set the expectations. If a parent's gonna sink money into that, have at it. It's not about free speech when you're, when you're in school, and there's guidelines around what, what students can and cannot wear, within reason, obviously. But the part that I'm really most concerned about is the disruption and disorder part. So I would like to see that taken out.
So my thought is, when we're looking at policies, what really is the point of the policy? And sure, it's not to get sued, but that, my main purpose is for people to feel safe, right? We were having, we were having some gender-specific things going on where certain students didn't feel comfortable. We want to keep other students comfortable that they're not having to look at hate speech or, or weapon injury or things like that. My concern about the disruption thing, and I know I'm the one who brought it up, is that was what our, I'm trying to go back to her comments. Just that she recommended it, but I, I'll be comfortable with Amy's recommendation, now that I'm talking it through.
She recommended keeping it or recommended?
It's kind of, that's what happens, I think, in court. That's what it comes up to, is like, what, and to me, it says, what is the safe? Did this make somebody feel unsafe? Is that what a disruption is? You know, and it could work both ways, right? Or does it infringe on learning? Because that's what we're really here about. We want kids to come and learn and not.
So that, that kind of goes to my point, though. I think that doesn't just apply. Wait, let me read this again.
I'm just wondering if we're over.
So I guess that, that clause, causing disruption or disorder, in that case, should apply to any of these bullet points. So like, clothing may not depict this, 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 to the extent that it caused, that it would cause a disruption or disorder within the school. But does that mean that kids can wear a Guinness T-shirt as long as it doesn't cause a disruption? And then, then you've already had a disruption in the school? So we're trying to prevent those sorts of things, right? We're trying to, we're not just going to enforce it when there's a disruption. But I get it that it makes it more enforceable if something did happen, because, yeah.
So. I wonder, then, if instead of saying disruption, we can say something about interfering with learning, right? Because that's really what we, we want people to feel safe, and we don't want it to be a distraction or interference with learning. I'm slightly uncomfortable with the reference to gang identifiers in this one, too.
I tend to skip over that when I'm reading.
Yeah, I, I kind of want to strike that, or talk about striking that. Must not threaten the hea-, I mean, that, what we're saying is not threatening people and not, and if somebody feels unsafe or uncomfortable with what's on a shirt because it says something terrible or whatever, it's interfering with their ability to learn. So maybe that's how we talk about it instead.
Everyone, and, and to, going along with what you just said, makes me think that this language about disruption, interference with learning, belongs more, Jay, sorry, scrolling in up at the top.
Yeah, yeah.
With sort of a philosophy about what the purpose of the dress code is and why we're providing it, the goals of the dress code.
Right.
And I don't know that we.
And by the way, there seems like there's a typo in the third, in the last bullet in that section.
Yeah, I can't tell if there's something missing there, or.
I think it's some. There's like, there's like something about.
After substances.
Oh, yeah, there's a period and then E R.
So my guess is that was gender identification, and I'm wondering if there was, you know, another phrase about language that's disparaging towards a, there's something missing here.
Supposed to be a, a sewn bullet. I think it just probably accidentally got, uh, deleted. But what, so what would you think about, I mean, we already say maintain a safe learning environment where they feel, wait, where they feel protective or supportive of clothes? Okay, so that's sort of a different.
That's different.
Yeah, but what would you feel about adding some language, and, and we can take this back as a policy committee.
Yeah, I think we maybe need to do that.
Do it one more time, but adding some of that language in there and, and repeating, saying something more about the purpose of this is to make sure kids have a, feel like they have a safe. What was the other word? Safe and supportive? What did you say? I should have written it down. You said it so well.
A good thing it's being recorded.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go back to the tape.
What did we say? Now I'm, oh, well, we said something about not threatening the health and safety. And then.
We did below, yeah.
It doesn't infringe on their ability to, and I don't remember what I said either.
Interfere with their ability.
Yeah, interfere with their ability to learn, or.
Yeah, here it is. And then, we could also, in this purpose language, we could say something about, not, about not causing, I don't know how to say it now, because now that, when I say causing disruption, all I can think of is.
Laura's legs.
On my legs.
Yeah, yeah.
I say that.
Which I agree, it's not, that's not what we're intending to cover by this language, so.
I mean, do you think a student is gonna go look at this language and then come back and say, Laura's legs are distracting me, make her wear pants. I just, I just, I don't think that.
I just want to read what Sharon said, and I apologize, it took me a minute to find it. So there's a question whether the district can legally prohibit clothing that includes profanity or pornography under Pyle versus South Hatley, which said, students can wear T-shirts that are obscene or vulgar as long as they do not create a disruption or disorder within the school. I would continue to include this prohibition in the policy, but you should be aware of the potential for challenge.
Oh.
That is her recommendation.
So I would say it exactly like that. Depicting profanity, it's, I know it's in there, profanity, et cetera, that has, that reasonably has the potential to cause a disruption or interfere with learning or something like that.
Or disturbance. Let's say disturbance, because disturbance is like, to, you know, I don't know. A disruption is a chicken running into the school. Disturbance is, you're disturbing people, I don't know.
I mean, it's hard, it's hard under that case law, it's hard to, and where was that, what court was that from? What, what?
It's South Hatley.
No, where?
Oh, what, what level?
State.
Doesn't say.
Massachusetts?
It's Massachusetts, it's South Hatley.
Okay, so it was.
It's from nineteen ninety-six, though.
Supreme Court of Massachusetts.
Ninety-six.
Oh.
I have a question for me.
Yeah.
I guess, so Laura mentioned students feeling unsafe because of clothing that attacked their gender or something to that effect. Was that, was that the reason for looking at this policy?
No.
No.
What was the impetus?
We had a request from a member because there were students being asked to cover up at a school. Girls who were maybe wearing strapless things or things like that. I had thought we had covered this with the high school policy years ago. It didn't trickle down to the middle school.
Okay.
So it was in their handbook that the middle school was more, so we're trying to, so we took a chance. We took another look at this policy. Because we were taking another look at the policy, then, we did some more research, and this was the best one that was found. This was from Oregon, and this was kind of the most, because we've, you know, this is an issue everywhere. I think we're way maybe, and I really shouldn't have opened my mouth.
Yeah.
I, I think you did say earlier, Laura, if I could interrupt just for a second, you did say something about being a little too in the weeds on this one, and I, I think you hit the nail on the head. The policy we have is very simple and very straightforward, and I feel like everybody's intentions here are always awesome. But I feel like in picking parts of it apart, we're kind of losing the spirit of what, what had been done in the past. And I just happen to look at MASCs, and I know you probably did, too, but it's two parag- two paragraphs, and it's the most simplistic thing ever.
Right.
You know, it, it's the responsibility for the dress and appearance of students rests with the individual students, parents slash guardians. It does use the phrase disorder or disruption. And it says, the administration is authorized to take action in instances where individual dress does not meet the stated requirements. Just saying that the attire is not destructive to school property complies with requirements for health and safety. And I feel like that's kind of the spirit of what we have now. Students can express themselves. You know, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be offending others, but if they are, then the administration is gonna, is gonna sort that out in. I don't necessarily think that that's the, the point of discipline. It's not the shirt, it's the attitude, right? It's the intent, and that's a bigger issue than cover up your shirt. Unless we're talking about girls wearing bras to school, in which case, that is in the policy. You cannot wear a bra to school. I mean, you should wear one if you can, but under a piece of clothing, obviously. Well, all right, maybe they shouldn't, maybe not everybody needs to, but what I'm saying is.
Well, why don't we take one more shot at this policy? It seems like we're not quite there yet. Maybe it is looking at the MASC policy. We did look at it, but it happened to be when everything was down, and we didn't, we're moving towards those policies anyway. Doesn't feel like people are a hundred percent comfortable. But I do, I, you know, I think it's also a conversation with administration, too. Just, some of it's just, you know, like, we're all from different generations, too. You know, you get a person from, you know, like, I'm still saying, like, I do think you should be professionally, or is over there saying, I don't want to go down that road, you know? We are the same generation, but it's different philosophies, and I get that. But I really, again, I just, you know, I don't want girls to be told they need to be covered up, like, and I don't want kids wearing swastikas. Like, you know, I don't want kids, but that's.
I think those are simple requests, right?
You know, I want kids to be able to be in school and not be, you know, but I also know what it's like to be a teenage girl, and I want to protect them.
The hot month's coming up.
Too.
I completely agree with you, Laura, and I think that what this policy does offer, and we're gonna work on it a little bit more, but it does provide some more guidance for students so that they know, you know, like, if, for example, I'm not saying we're going to, but if, for example, we did say, you must dress professionally for school, they're not gonna, like.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Right.
So I, I think getting a little bit more specific, it can be, can serve the other purpose of the policy, which is providing guidance to the students so they know what the heck to do or not do.
Well, I agree with you.
I feel like you've been trying to say something.
I like the spirit of this. I like the way it sort of lays out, you know, the reasons for our dress code, what we're trying to accomplish with the dress code. I don't think we scrapped this at all, from my perspective. I think it's a good move. I think, yeah, we just have to figure out that language, and yeah, I mean, so if there's potential for someone to, to say it's not allowable under a nineteen ninety-six decision, I'm okay with that. I think I'll spin the wheel on that one. But I think, in general, for the reasons all of us have said, I like the way it sets up the context. I like Liz, as you said, the way it provides some guidance to the students. It's almost there.
If I could just add one more thing.
Yeah.
If, if, if we're trying to provide guidance to students and parents, I would argue that this is not the document to do that in. That belongs in the school handbooks, because the parents don't look at this.
But they pull from this, and that was the issue.
Yeah, they pull from it.
The issue was the handbook had a dress code policy that was not, so we need, yes, I agree with you, because nobody reads.
Specifics could be in the handbook with the reference to our policy, is what I'm getting at.
Yes, and I agree, a hundred percent. But we need some kind of, because otherwise, they, it's just made up or whatever.
It's for, it's interpreted differently in different buildings or by different people within the same building.
Right.
And one thing we haven't done directly is speak with the principals at the middle school and the high school.
Yes.
So I'd like to hear.
We didn't, but Jay did.
Yeah, but I, I think, I'd like to hear with, directly, you know, and ask some questions about what their experiences have been, what their concerns might be, and, and, you know, I, I, I'm hesitant to finalize this as well without having a direct conversation with them.
So you want to invite them to a meeting and talk about the dress code with them? Because I think what happened was it got sent to them, and they sent their concerns through Jay, which is normally what should happen. We usually don't go one-on, like.
Well, I can go speak to the principal if I want.
You absolutely can go speak to the principal about the policy, but I, I don't know. I feel like that was already done, was it not?
It, it was. One thing to consider, I know that it sounds like the committee's gonna look at it again. I wonder if even maybe with some slight modifications, keeping that first and second part and doing away with the non-allowable dress, it really addresses many of the issues that where that's where we really get into the weeds, and if.
Right.
Dress code guidelines is done well, and as Amy was saying, kind of broad, you don't need, like, you can't say, this is what, these are the guidelines, and then just make sure you don't wear this, like.
Right.
Yeah, because that list could go on forever.
Right.
Right, like, why are sunglasses on it, but not, you know, a pocket knife, or, I don't know.
No, that's a different policy. But my daughter does have a wearable knife.
I like that.
Do we know what the last bullet is supposed to say in that top section, or you guys just gonna fix it?
It's in the old.
I'm sure it's in there.
I think it's just, it's. I think it's just, it's, for some reason, it was crossed out in my, um, so it's ensure that all students are treated equitably regardless of gender, gen. But for some reason, it was deleted accidentally. Gender identification, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, body type, size, religion. So we could invite the principals to our policy subcommittee. We've done that before, which I think would be a better way to do it.
But you said we already got the information, so what is that information?
Thought we did. I thought Jay sent it over to us.
No, I, um, yeah, nothing.
They were fine with it.
Definitely not rocket science. They, if they want, um, they know I'm not thrilled and it's certainly not intentional, but what was in our policy didn't match up in lockstep with what's in the handbooks. It wasn't done in like a tricky way. It was just updated in some summer and it just goes off track. Uh, I think they've been great with it. I have to say, our, our students have been pretty good with, dress code's always a headache, but our, our kids are pretty great about it for the most part. But like, when I see that dress code guidelines after stating about, you know, the general approach, that's, I mean, that's pretty basic and pretty solid.
Okay, so they didn't really, they didn't really have any comments then?
No, um, if we, well, from the middle school, the biggest thing, less so now, but if it was in the middle of the winter, uh, they were, they have historically not allowed hats and hoods, except for a few individual students, so this would be a move away from that. If you, well, you know, middle school, if you did it in the middle of the winter, every kid would have a hat and a hood on just to try it out. Uh, now with the better weather, I don't think it's going to be an issue. And obviously I put this on Roseanne's radar a month ago, so that wouldn't be an issue. High school, no surprises there. Um, they just want, whatever we do, they just want it to be crystal clear so they can be consistent.
Do they have timing requirements? So if, are they getting their handbooks ready for, I mean, I know we've already.
No, even if this was done after the handbook, which technically it would be, um, now that it's all electronic, they would just update it.
They just update it there, so it's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
But nothing, other than that change in hats and hoods at the middle school, nothing that we're talking about would be a, a, a shift.
Okay, okay.
So are we comfortable with Jay's recommendation of getting rid of the non-allowable dress?
I think we should meet again.
Do you want to meet again?
Yeah, I think we should meet again. There's a lot to digest and unpack here and.
Yeah, okay, cool.
I, maybe I'll do a little more case law research and see what else. I, I know there's.
You're still pulling up that. I can't wait.
Go and read it.
She's so good at it. She is. Yeah, I will not be doing that.
Legal nerdy stuff.
But maybe we'll adopt the M A S C now that it's back up and running. Okay, so thanks, everybody, for your input.
Yeah.
Cool.
It's fun to still have, so, uh, policies to talk about. So I'd finally sent over to you, Laura, that list of, so we have a list of all of the policies that we've worked on, um, since June of twenty twenty, which are going to be excluded from the M A S C update. And I sent it, I, it took me forever to get through everything and, um, make sure everything was, uh, that we had it all. But sent it to Laura today. See, just if you don't mind eyeballing it, just to see, like, I went through it a few times and looked all of our, um, all of our agenda for the, the last three years to make sure that I caught everything. So, um, let me know if you notice anything. The next thing I'm going to do is make sure all the links are, uh, current because I had some notes and some of them, I think, some of the, the links were, and, and in some cases, it was just because we had actually deleted it, so it's fine. But, and, uh, I was just going, that was my next step. But I thought if we at least got that to them, then.
Yeah, we need to do some, another step for them, too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We got to download it all into Word.
Downloaded the, we have to download the ones that we're keeping into Word?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I can do that, though. Cool, thanks, Liz.
Yeah, so.
Slowly butcher.
Slow work, but.
I think we'll have it by September. We'll be good to go.
We'll be good to go.
For next year.
Okay, anything else, Laura, on, uh, policy?
No.
Do we have anything else? No. Any questions for the policy committee?
Do we have a timeline yet?
For us getting that done?
Yes.
Just talked about.
It's work on us.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it takes a long time to, it took a long time for, it was on me first to, to get, go through everything and identify all those that were, that we had, um, in fact, reviewed and, and had updated over the last three years. So that's the first step. And then the next step, we have to download them all and give them Word versions and get those over to M I C. And then I guess we'll find out. But it's on us right now. Um, but we're working on it. It's just been a lot of work. Okay, uh, member reports. No, okay. Um, we don't have any correspondence, I don't think. I didn't see anything. You don't need a second session. All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussions? See none? All those in favor? I carry the, motion's carried. All right, good night, Grafton. Thank you.